Make sure that y'all know that letting this building go vacant is not good either. And that's kind of what we had going on with the Collins Street Bakery. We don't want that building to go destroyed. We know what that hospital looks like just on the other side of the street. But anyway, the choice is yours, but I wanted you to know what kind of architecture we're dealing with. And so many people get these buildings and put cut stone also. They ruin the architecture. They don't know what they have. And this is a very hot commodity item across the country. And the values of these buildings are skyrocketing statewide. So I'll be countrywide. So I'd like to make sure that we know what we have here.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
My name is Chip Millison, and I live at 253 FM 1564 West Greenville, which is in the Greenville School District, 75402. And first, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here as an ardent supporter of the zoning change and of the mission of Poema and Steve and Christie Glass. Even last night at the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's widespread acknowledgement of a need for these types of homes and facilities. You know, every young man, we keep talking boys, but they're young men. And everyone that comes out of the foster and ages out of the foster system has a path, two paths. One is to becoming a successful member of society and the community, and the other is not. And, you know, we're talking about one individual, but in reality, most of those, if not all, will become parents of some of children, one or more children. And what they become will be an impact what their children will become. And just as the river starts with one drop of water, even the Amazon, that's the same case here, that one child, one young man, will make a difference positively or negatively to future generations. And that's what we're all interested in really, is future generations. So, you know, I recognize and understand concerns from the local residents about safety, but I can say that knowing Chris, Steve and Christie, that if there is an issue unforeseen, that they can feel comfortable going to those individuals and talking with them and addressing them and be comfortable of no reprisal or no confrontation, that it, they want to be, and this home will be, a asset to that local neighborhood. And that's, you can't say that about anybody, a landlord that rents to somebody moving in. You can't say that that person moving in will have that same, you'll be able to do that with that individual or somebody that buys a house there, just as the vetting process. You don't have that with people who renters that come in or with people who buy homes there. I just want to ask you for your support and approval of the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor?
My name's Rick Prettyman. My address, 7662 Cattle Creek Road, but that's in Quinlan. I'm a pastor at Christ Community Church in Greenville on Sale Street and been serving there as a pastor for 13 years. One comment that I would add and one of the reasons that we would be supportive of this ministry is our church hosts, we have a class. It meets every Thursday night. It's called Focus on Fathers. And it has met, it meets 50 weeks out of the year. It's a 10-week course, and it's just for men. And most of those men come from CPS. They're there because they either have lost their children or they're trying to get them back or trying to get their lives in order. And one of the things that is absolutely consistent throughout every week, and like I said, you can think of over 300 weeks, and classes range from as low as eight to as many as 18. And they continued through COVID. Even, there was one, needs don't stop. We had to get creative in how we did it. But one of the things, if we could have every single one of those guys come up here and give you one thing they all have in common is that they didn't have anyone to mentor them. They didn't have a father in almost all of the cases, but no one invested in their lives. And the big challenge is, as someone already mentioned, now they're dads and they have children. And how are they gonna not pass on the same sort of stuff that has caused them to be in the class? I mean, they're in the class because they inherited stuff and now they're passing it on. And so I would just encourage you to, as you think about the young men in our community, and that's where I would be too, is be more interested, or at least primarily interested first in the young men in our community, but who could be a part of that program and have some hope in a future, but also have someone who can begin to pour into their lives so that they don't end up, they may come to our church, but they're not there for a class because they've found some success in life. And so I would also say that we would be grateful for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Katie Ridge, and I live at 5405 Vale Street here in Greenville. And I would just like to say that actually in my past, I was a case manager at the local mental health center here, and I spent years dealing with some of these kids that were in foster care and helping them and mentoring them myself. And the lack of resources that we have in this community are enormous. And we have so many kids that need that kind of passion that you've heard about today. This would only be an asset to this community. It would definitely not take away from anything that we have to offer here in Greenville. I fully support this ministry and everything that they are working towards. And actually with the Rotary Club, we are going to be developing a new type of Rotary Club here in Greenville to help with some of the negative things we've seen even here in this community. The police officers have told me about it, the sheriff's department. Rafa Clinic has told me about some of the negative things that we have seen happening in our community. So let's get these boys before they're ever in that position to have to make those decisions to become something we don't want to see in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Maybe you can pull that mic down a little bit?
I think I need to.
I don't know.
That's all right.
There.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Beverly Millison. I live at 253 FM 1564 West Greenville, Texas. I was born in Greenville, but I've only lived here for less than two years. So I just wanted to speak in support of this project. And I had things to say, but most of what I had to say has already been said. So I just want to tell you what happened to me last night. I woke up at about 3:30 last night, and I started thinking about what I was gonna say today. And I started thinking about what my life would have been like had I been in the foster care program and aged out at 18. I turned 18 in 19, when I was a senior in high school in November of that senior year. And so, you know, the things that I thought about were, did I have all my I's dotted and all my T's crossed? Do I have all my credits to graduate? You know, all of those kinds of things and staying out of trouble so I could graduate. And then I was thinking about things like getting a killer dress to wear to prom and could we get a limo and where we were gonna party after commencement? And things like getting my applications to college in on time and what sororities might call me to rush. And those kinds of things were my concerns at that time and I think most, a lot of high school students. But had I been in the foster care system, I've thought about, you know, how different that might have been. Maybe I would have been thinking more about was I even going to be able to continue to attend classes? Where would I sleep? Where would I take a shower? Where would I brush my teeth? If I had have been so blessed to have gotten transportation that I would be able to keep, maybe I could sleep in the car and maybe I could take a spit bath or brush my teeth in a public restroom. But where would I maybe heat my soup and keep my milk for cereal? If I had a job, how would I get to my job? How would I get to my school? Things that most of us who have been so blessed to have family support have never even thought of. And I've worked with foster families now for a few years in different capacities. And honestly, I never really thought about that until last night. And so I just wanted to put those thoughts in your mind. And I'm hoping and believing that the Greenville community will step up and support this and work with us to open a facility of this kind. And I personally, I attended the P&amp;Z meeting last night as well and heard some in opposition speak. And I was actually very encouraged that we have people in that neighborhood who are so concerned. You know, they're concerned about their children. They're concerned about their grandchildren. And that's the kind of people we want to work with. That's the kind of people we want to be around these kids as well. We want to be an enhancement to the community and not take away anything. So I just thank you for your time and your consideration of all the information that we put before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
My name is Melissa Pendigraft. I live at 5301 Stonewall. I'm new to the community. I've been here since August, and I absolutely love this town. My family took in my very young cousin at the age of five, and I was still under 10 myself. And we took her in because her mother was a drug dealer and her mother was involved in crime and was hiding from people who were trying to kill her because she went bad on a drug deal. And she lived with us for several years, and the mother went to prison. And she got back out. We had no choice but to give her back to this mother. And in that process, this young lady had many children out of wedlock, bad relationships, abusive relationships, people who took advantage of her, who molested her in the system and who just did horrible things to her. And she continued the cycle of going to jail, having kids out of wedlock and going through several marriages and just really bad situations. These problems are generational. And if they are not helped, then it will continue. And we will continue to have crime in family homes, like in this area that we're talking about. People who live there, they're tired of seeing the crime. When we first moved here, we met a police officer, and he told us where to avoid. And that was one of the places. And I thought that was tragic and sad. I like to drive up and down the streets and look at the beautiful homes. And it breaks my heart to see the crime that is in this city. And that crime keeping away this type of help to young people. 18 to 24, those are people who are out of school and they're trying to find their way in life. And if there are not people there to help them find their way and mentor them, then it's going to perpetuate the problem. We won't have jobs. We will have bad streets. We won't have income. It will just continue the problem. I would like to encourage that if this goes forward, that this group of people also reach out to that particular neighborhood and do everything in their power to raise the level to safety. Not just for that place, for that location, but for the entire neighborhood. I think that's a fair compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? If not, if not, we welcome you to come forward now. Thank you.
Everybody doing? My name is Maddie Robinson. I live on 3530 Cattle. I work for the Greenville Hospital, been out there 47 years. I raised two kids. I'm a single parent, and I live in that neighborhood. And to me, that neighborhood has been a pediatric clinic. It's been a well-woman clinic. It's been a dental clinic. It's been Wesley Street, I can't even think of the name of it. Anyway, it's been several offices. You know, I don't think you need to be put in as kids getting out of the foster system. We already got a bad neighborhood. I mean, you could barely get the police to come out to monitor when you call them. I work nights. I work in the emergency room. If we're gonna help somebody, let's help our homeless. We don't do nothing for them. Our psych people, we have 10 and 12 psych people in the emergency room at nighttime. We're not equipped to take care of psychs, but we have to take care of them, you know? So why would we forget about our own? Were they Rockwallers? Put it in Rockwall. Put it in Quinlan. If you wanna put that somewhere, why bring it in my neighborhood where there's a school right up the street? They're right. I'm not gonna say it's not gonna be well-managed, but you don't know what's going through people's mind, you know? So I feel like, no, I am very against it. I raised two kids. One of them is an architect. I did it. I didn't ask nobody to help me. I did it. One of my, my daughter is physical therapist. She's a fitness trainer. She's a yoga instructor. We, I, I did it myself. I feel like you got to help yourself. You know, I'm for helping people, but I don't feel like you're gonna put that down in my neighborhood where my streets are so bad and the street lights, you have to call the city for the streetlights seven, three or four times to fix the bub in the streetlight. Every other week, I have to call, I swear they done built the new homes. And I'm for, I'm for improvement. But why is it you can't drive out your driveway where there's cracks and dents? And that could be this deal. Every other week, they come and fill it in. That's ridiculous. I mean, I voted to have nice streets when that came up. But I don't feel safe having that in there. I really don't. I'm just gonna tell you, I'm gonna be honest. You know, if they wanna put it on the outskirts of Greenville, I will support it. Channel 8 has children. I support that. I send money every month for that. I'm not against it, but I don't want that in my neighborhood because it scares me the death. It's a high, it's a school up there. We have young women and young men.
We understand.
You know?
We have a three-minute limit.
Okay.
And thank you very, very much for your comments. Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this ordinance? In opposition to this ordinance, I should say. Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Turner.
Can you guys hear me?
Okay. I do live in Rockwall, but I made a huge investment here in Greenville. Bought the three houses that, one house is right next door to this office and the next two houses, and around the corner, I bought another house. I made a giant investment in that neighborhood. I think from talking with the folks that live in my houses, they absolutely are against it. Not against the children, not against the management. They're against multifamily. I think we all are. I think everybody is. I think that anytime multifamily comes up, I think the homeowners and the residents have violently opposed it at every, every place I've known. I agree that, you know, again, this is, appears to me it's been a whole thing about taking care of children, taking care of this and taking care of that. And that's okay. And I also believe in that. I don't believe in multifamily right next door to us. I don't believe in it. I think that it's the wrong thing to do. I think the office has only been vacant one year. I think that, I think it would do a lot more for the neighborhood as an office. And again, if this were going to be apartments there and multiple families with children, I would say the same thing. I'm against multifamily. I appreciate the fact that the folks in Rockwall and the churches here and the community here wants to take care of people. I think we all want to do that. I just don't want it right there where I've made my investment. I got those houses. I put in new wiring. I put in new plumbing. I have brand-new refrigerators and stoves. I've done a nice investment to that area. So I'm just totally against multifamily. I think you also know there's been a number of new houses that have been built out there. I think that, again, we're all against multifamily. Has nothing to do with children, has nothing to do with foster homes, has nothing to do with the churches. We just do not want multifamily right there on our street.
Thank you.
And that's it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance?
My name is Mona Beecham. I stay at 3612 and 1/2 Cattle Street here in Greenville, which is directly next door to the property that everyone is talking about. Like they said, we do not have a problem with the program itself. What I do have a problem with, you're gonna put it, and that's right next door to my house. The neighborhood is bad enough as it is. You have dope dealers all over. You have crackheads. You have meth addicts. My granddaughter loves to go and get the mail. It's 30 feet from our front door. I still have to stand and watch her go to the mailbox and bag. Now, this is now. Okay, every night, I have to sleep with my light on, on my porch to make sure that nobody is coming to mess with my cars or do anything to the house. Really, just to get some sleep. Anybody that says that, okay, we're gonna build a fence, we're gonna have surveillance. I worked in the detention center for eight years. A fence and surveillance is not gonna stop anybody if they want to get out. Y'all know that. We've had people escape from the jail. So what makes you think that a surveillance camera and a fence, locked doors, is gonna stop them? You say, they say that they look at them, they put in their little requests and everything. That's not enough. People change. People change. You might get one set of people in there. Once they get in there, it's a whole different scenario. You have impressionable kids at the middle school. You have them walking up and down the street trying to catch the bus. We don't know what, what kind of element they're gonna bring in there. You can say one thing, but once they get in there, it's a whole different story. I want to keep my kids safe. Not just my kids, but the kids that, all up and down the street. There's lots of kids down there. You know, I have nothing against the program, but if you're gonna do this program, put it somewhere else. I sat and I listened at all y'all, give y'all addresses. Didn't nobody live on Cattle Street? Nobody but me and Maddie. Y'all don't know what goes on over there. They can say it's this and they can say it's that. That's a rough area already. I've had to cut the bushes in front of my house for the people, the drug addicts standing behind the bushes. I go to walk out my door, there's somebody standing behind the bushes. What do I know what they're gonna do to me? You know? So I have nothing against the program. Program sounds good. It probably looks good on paper, but just not next door to my house. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Okay, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council? Is there, is there a motion regarding this issue?
This is a motion to approve this establishment?
You're making a motion to?
Approve.
Approve? You moving to approve this ordinance?
Okay. No, I'm not making the motion. I was just asking.
The ordinance can be made, or the motion can be made.
Yeah, it can be made.
Okay.
Either way, right. So is there a motion?
May I, I'd like to make a comment if you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine.
Mayor, I appreciate all the folks coming out tonight, and there is no doubt that there's a community need for these services. But once again, as former councilmember Money said, this is a straight zoning issue. If we go back to our agenda item report, items four and five, they state, "Are the uses adjacent to the proposed use similar in nature in terms of appearance, hours of operation, and other general aspects of compatibility?" The staff's comment was, "This will be totally different than what is in the area now." It's all single-family in the area. Number five, "Does the proposed use prevent or present a significant benefit to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community? Would it contribute to the city's long-term economic well-being?" The staff's comment is, "No, but it would bring use to an empty building." I don't believe bringing use to an empty building is sufficient reason for a zoning change. So I will make the motion to deny.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay. And you, can we all vote on that motion, please?
So if we vote yes, we are denying the motion.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
So if you vote yes, you'll be denying the motion. Did Ben vote? Okay. Okay. It looks like.
There's two abstentions?
I don't know how to interpret that quite. So Ben is voting no. I voted no. How did you vote, Tim?
I voted no.
So there are three no's. Is there a fourth no?
You abstained.
You abstained.
Oh, I didn't mean to abstain. I vote no. I'm sorry. Which button to push?
I voted yes.
You voted yes.
So you voted yes.
To turn it down.
No. The other option.
You're voting?
You don't, you didn't mean to abstain.
No, I didn't.
You meant to vote yes to turn down the zoning change. Or you meant to vote no to give the zoning change?
No, yeah, no. I voted no to accept it.
Oh, you want to accept it?
Right.
Okay, so it's four to two.
Okay.
In favor of passing it, of allowing the zoning change. Or did I miscount?
Oh.
Gary voted no.
Let's be very clear about that. I think we should do an oral vote. So I'm voting no. Just go around. To the motion, I'm voting no to the motion.
I voted no to the motion.
Okay.
I voted yes for the motion.
The motion is to not allow the zoning change.
Oh.
So do you want to allow the zoning change?
Yes.
Then that's, then you vote no.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And you made the motion, you're voting no.
Correct.
No, you're voting yes.
I'm voting yes.
Okay.
I voted yes.
You're voting yes. Okay, so it's four to two.
So it's four to two.
Four to two, it passes.
Okay. Is there a, so that motion fails. Having failed, is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'm gonna approve this ordinance.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. All vote please?
We vote no.
We have to do it verbal? Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Yes, sir.
Do you vote for this motion? Are you voting for this motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm voting for it.
Mr. Cruz?
Stu, I'm voting for this motion.
Voting opposed?
No.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Mr. Cook? Okay, Ben is gonna vote? Okay, okay, so it passes four to two. So this ordinance passes four to two. Thank you for your comments this evening. Moving to the next item, consider- Moving to the next item, consideration of an action on an ordinance authorizing a change in zoning from agricultural to planned development, single-family, on property located at 83, at the 8300 block of FM 1570. Ms. Anderson?
All right, thank you, Mayor. This property is located on the southwestern portion of Greenville, and I don't know if y'all got a copy of it.
Thank you.
But the property is located on the southwestern corner. It's partly in the city limits and partly outside of the city limits. Oh, that's good. Go to a few slides down.
I've seen it already.
Another one. There we go. Okay, so you can see there on the aerial, it's way to the far southwest with Alvoich Drive to the north, and then you had Harrell's Street to the west of it and 1570. The next one. So currently, since half of it is in the city limits, half of it is zone agricultural. It's gonna be a two-phase deal where it's 260 acres and approximately 180 lots total. I think that they're actually gonna, when they do the second phase and next entire thing, the entire thing will be run by HOA. We have a minimum of one acre lots. They will range, I think, between one to four acres, and they'll have interior streets that they'll maintain via the HOA. So, one of the things is that it is, well, if you go to the next slide, I guess. So, if you look at this, this is the future land use plan, and I know that it's not showing the city limits because the existing land use plan that we have actually included the ETJ in the planning as well. But you can see here that all of this area is planned for low-density residential, so this development actually definitely complies with what the future land use is calling for. It's calling for low-density, and being that these are one-acre lots, it, it, it works. The city staff does recommend it for a number of reasons. One is that having these, this type of development here, it actually encourages more development in the area, as this is more of a, a less dense area, and we do want to encourage growth, which is good for the city. It also encourages the type of development we're seeing in neighboring cities with these larger lots. This is something that we've been wanting to see, and is actually beneficial from a planning standpoint also, because you kind of want those larger lots on your perimeter, and it allows for a transition as you get more into the core of the city, where denser development tend to happen and occur. We've, we sent out eight property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Now, this one actually did pass, and it was four to three. There was just a few concerns about the roads and things. However, HOA kind of controls and has, and restricts any type of parking on the street or any issues that will cause, that will.
Did you announce the P and Z results?
Yes, it was four to three.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay, is the applicant here? Did you have, did you have a question for Ms. Anderson, Al? Did you have a question for her?
No, I was just gonna ask her if she wouldn't mind touching base on some of the reasons for the split vote at P and Z.
Yeah, it was because of, yes. It was, they were concerned about lack of sidewalks in this development, although it's more of a, kind of a rural estate development, being at the lots of one to four acres, but they were concerned about that. And also just the width of the roads being a little bit more narrow than what we tend to require. However, this is something that is gonna be privately maintained by the HOA and the residents and not maintained by the city. So those were the concerns, and also the fact of how drainage would occur in septic systems, and those were the general kind of hesitancies about it.
In what you passed out, there's a red line. Is that a floodplain?
Yes.
Or what, what is that red line area?
Yeah, they do have the floodplain shown there, and there's gonna be a further study. He'll go into detail about it, but they did a, they're actually kind of an estimate based upon a tree line, but they try to keep most of the lots out of the floodplain. Any of them that may actually be in a floodplain after the study is done, though, will be more, they will be converted to open space.
Okay. Are there any more questions? Okay, is the applicant here, please? Representative the applicant, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Todd Winters. I'm at 201 Windcoast Circle in Wiley, Texas. I represent the buyer and the developer of this project. Ms. Anderson did a good job explaining where this project is. We're basically on FM 1570, almost exactly between Highway 66 and Interstate 30. We have 260 acres there, 180 lots, so we do meet the future land use plan of the, of the low-density. These will all be minimum one-acre lots. The majority of those lots, if you have a chance to look at that, you can see the ones kind of, that fan out around a curve, they're up to four acres on several of those. One thing I wanted to mention, and she did not, is that we're going to extend a 16-inch water line from Highway 66 down to this site. It's little, right at a mile of water line, which will almost make the loop that you guys need down to Interstate 30. So, that's about a half a million dollar investment that we're making to, to expand the water to this area. There's a existing water line there now that's, that's very small, but we'll replace it with a 16-inch, which will open up development and, and bring water to all the properties along this highway. So, that's probably one of the biggest impacts that we're having here. We're also going to do a, a traffic impact analysis, because we will have a connection to Tex- dot, if you can see on the layout there. We do have one connection to, to Tex- dot, and then we'd connect to the county roads. So there was a lot of talk last night about the roadways. If you look at this bullet point list that's up here now, basically, we've taken the SF-1 zoning, which is, we're using as our base zoning, and these bullet points here show you what, what additional standards we're putting in place, with a minimum lot width and a front yard setback of 40 feet. So, one of the reasons that we don't have sidewalks, I know that that was something that was mentioned. When you have a rural development, we do these all over the county. We do all these in Rockwall and Heath and several different places. We're gonna have a 26-foot wide paved street. It'll have about a two-foot shoulder on each side as well to give it somewhat of an estate feel, and then there will be a bar ditch, which will carry the drainage. So, that's all, and that's all stays within a 60-foot right-of-way. So, if you can, just imagine we have a 26-foot street, and then we have the ditch, and then we have a 40-foot setback. So, what that does, it keeps people from parking on the street, because you have a long driveway, and I know you guys have all seen these type of, types of neighborhoods. So, there really is nowhere to put a sidewalk, and, and most people who live in this, there's, there's not a lot of traffic, as you can see. We don't have a lot of connectivity, so we will, you know, people walk in the street, and that's, it's a safe place to walk. So we don't have sidewalks. We're going to do a drainage study. That red line you're seeing on that map is the unstudied FEMA floodplain. So we're actually going to hire a hydrologist to do an actual flood study. If you look in the Phase 2 area there, we have some lots that extend into that red line, and if the study comes out in our favor and we can reclaim that area, we'll have lots there. If not, we'll have 175 lots probably instead of 180. But that's in Phase 2, so we have time. With FEMA, their review, review times have been up to a year now with COVID and everything that's going on. So, we're gonna start with Phase 1, which is the northern half of this project, which is currently in the city, and we're gonna start the annexation process of the, the balance of the property, as well as the flood study. So, by the time we get to Phase 2, we'll have, everything will be in the city, it will follow city standards, and it will be built to the, to the city regulations. One thing I do want to mention too is the timing of this. This is May of 2021. We get the zoning, then we start the engineering process, that takes a few months, and then we have the review time, and the bidding process. We probably won't start this job until later this year. Takes about a year to build it, so that's all in 2022. We start building houses sometime in 2023 for Phase 1. So we have a couple of years here to, to get the flood study done, to get the Phase 2 annex, to get everything set up, to move into Phase 2. So this will not be where we're gonna go put, you know, 180 houses on the ground at one time. This will be a process, as all of our other neighborhoods are as well. Probably the only item that needs some clarification that Mr. Kelso pointed out to me is that sixth item up there, the perimeter streets of Alvoich and Harrell Street. I have some pictures here to show you what those streets currently look like right now. Alvoich is about a 12 to 15-foot wide, some type of, I think it used to be asphalt, and they have, they have concrete driveways off of that. And then the Harrell Street is basically, basically a cletchy rock road, and so you can see. What, what we're proposing to do there, and, and it's basically because of, of right-of-way. So we're going to dedicate our half of the right-of-way. In order to build a, a full right-of-way width, we would have to get a, right-of-way from the joining property owners, the property owners across the street. So what we want to do is basically go back with a street section and, to take it from a dirt road to a concrete street, but you, but utilize the open ditches that are there for the drainage. It's, it's an economic impact, and it's a, it's also, we just don't have the physical right-of-way to put in a, you know, a very real wide street through there, so. But with that, that's really everything I believe that we're intending to do. I mean, we do meet the comp plan, the future land use plan, and I think that covers it. So, one thing I do want to mention, someone asked last night what the projected home values are. These are gonna start at 400,000, and with the way things are going these days, I expect them to be closer to 500,000. That is a 272 million and 90 million dollar project, tax-based there. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions?
I have a few, Mayor.
Okay.
Sorry, I was handing the photos down. Hi. I have a few. I was going through the development agreement, and I don't know whether you would answer these questions, or maybe Dan you would.
Or LaTura.
Pardon?
Or LaTura.
Or LaTura. In, in 2.1, it, it mentioned, and you touched upon bringing the second phase into the city. Are, are you intending to do the full, the execution of the full-purpose annexation and have it completed by January 1st of 2022?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In Section 2-3, it states the, there's a city services annexation plan? There was nothing in our material that said what it was. Can you touch on what was agreed to in the city services plan?
I'm reading this right now.
I believe it only pertains to the water line, because the city will only serve water to this development, and so as it's annexed, you adjust your plan to serve what's now going to be in the city.
Well, if, if we are annexed into the city, will we be required to provide police, fire, garbage, and all the ancillary services we offer elsewhere in the city limits?
Yes.
We will?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a state rule. It's not something that we can get around.
Okay.
Are you talking about the sentence that, that talks about the service plan that we, that we will agree on?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that, you didn't get it, because it doesn't exist yet.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, Section 2-6 talks about the mandatory HOA. What if the HOA fails?
Hi, are you asking me?
Yes, does, does the city assume full responsibility for all the infrastructure?
No, we wouldn't own it. You're talking about the street infrastructure that they're gonna own and make?
Street, all, all, all the infrastructure, yeah. If it's annexed into the city and the mandatory HOA fails?
Well, the only infrastructure that we'll have out there is water, right?
That's correct.
We're not gonna have sewer, we're not gonna do anything with the streets, and so the answer is no. We wouldn't have any legal obligation to assume maintenance or ownership of those.
Well, then, then I think, what would be the purpose of the two-year bond for the, the performance bond before the city took over certain infrastructure? And I believe that?
It's only for the water.
That is only for the water? Okay. Okay, one, one last question. 5-3 said there would be no parkland or park, parkland fees in lieu of, as part of this PD, there'll be, there'll be no dedicated parkland or fee in lieu of? Is that correct?
Are you asking me what, what it says?
Whoever wants to answer.
Or, you're starting to?
5-3, no park fees. "In consideration of the owner's obligation in this agreement, the city waives or relinquishes or relishes any right that it might have to current or future city ordinance or state law to levy or collect fees for parks, recreation, or open space facilities in conjunction with the property, or, and require one or more dedication of land for the purpose." So there'll be no parkland dedication or park assess, park fees assessed in this subdivision, right?
That's, yeah, I mean, that, that's, I believe that's what that says.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
So you're understanding with LaTura? Okay. I'm getting, okay.
What would a typical, if it's a $500,000 home, what would the typical HOA annual fee be? Can you estimate that?
You know, I'm, I'm the engineer on the project. I don't know that, but I do know that will be a little bit more than normal, just because it will encompass the maintenance of the streets and drainage.
Okay, but you don't have, you couldn't look up in the sky and say, "What's normal?"
I'm so sorry, I, I can't.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions?
I, I have a more quick question.
Okay.
On, on the plot, or on, on the plan that you passed around, did I, did I see it was like 21 lots that were in the floodplain, basically?
There are six to the floodplain. All of those will be at least an acre net of the floodplain.
Right, and, and that will be unbuildable, and you'll have to raise foundations and things like that, correct?
Yes, sir. We will do a study to make sure that we're at least two to three feet above the 100-year flood elevation on all of those lots that are adjacent.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite all those who would like to speak
in favor of this ordinance to come forward and speak. If there are none, Mr. Kelso, are you coming forward? I don't think it's necessary for, well, maybe it is for public hearing.
Also had a sheet on item 8B, I believe.
We haven't got that yet.
We haven't got that yet, John.
John Kelso, 3505, 6,005 Horn Drive, Greenville, 75402. I understand the concern about the streets and all that. I, I, you know, I was here last night. I, I get that. There was concerns about, are the streets really up to city code snuff when we're, when it's gonna be in the city limits? You know, what's up with that? I, you know, that's, yeah, that's an issue, but with a PD, planned development, I suppose you can do anything, you know, that's agreed to, so I, I'm not sure. That's an issue that you guys can sort out in your head yourself. I just wanted to say, I'm in favor of this, because, you know, a couple of months ago, we, we did a similar proposal, not similar proposal, but on 1570, down in this same sort area of town, you, you approved single-family three. And I was against that at the time, and one of the reasons is, this is the type of development on the outer edges of Greenville, out in the agricultural undeveloped areas now. This is the kind of development people would want to come to, if they're gonna come to the outer, you know, out in the country, what I'm gonna call this, people moving to the country. If they're gonna move to the country, they don't want to live in an SF-3, small lot, you know, that, that's not what we should be developing. This is the kind of thing you want, three, four acres, lot of room between you and your neighbor, large house, a large structure in the back for workshop or whatever, she-shack, I don't know. But this, this is the kind of development we should be doing on these outer, outer edges of our, of our city limits, and, and the type of, that will draw higher-end development. That's, that's what we want, I think. Seems to be. Seems to be what most people want. And so, I think that's a good reason why this is the kind of development. Now, I don't know about the streets, what should they look like, but this is the kind of development we should be pursuing and trying to approve for zoning changes. Thank you.
I thought there was a term, in the term sheet I saw, I thought that this developer was required to build these streets in accordance with city specifications. Is that not true?
Well, Latora and Steve are the ones that are actually presenting this. I, I don't remember the answers to most of those questions.
Well, Steve, can you come, Latora, can you come forward and address that? Because I believe these, I don't know if this, I'm-
The seeds of the other seed stand. The difference is, there's not going to be curbs and gutters.
Right.
I call them the state streets, and it's what you see a lot in a rural area, where you do have the bar ditches. These aren't going to be big holes in the ground, there'll be swells in there. And that's, but the street itself will be built to the standards that we build in streets right here, right now.
Without curbs and gutters?
Correct, and that, that is in the agreement also.
I thought it was. Okay, I'm sorry to disrupt the-
That was one of the major points.
I wanted to just clarify that point, if it's okay. Can we continue with the public hearing? Those who would like to speak in favor of this development? I'm sorry, Mr. Ellis. Is anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this development? I'd rather not mix these, okay. Having said that, is there anyone that's speaking opposition to this ordinance?
Sorry, Ellis, I've been here complaining. I heard, hope you heard the word "bar ditch." And if I remember correctly, we just had an election about streets. So, I guess we should look to the future a little bit, because at some point, these streets would wind up in the city of Greenville. So, now we have 26-foot wide streets. So, the streets that we put in, in all of our subdivisions, are 31-foot wide, they're 3,600 PSI concrete, they have curbs. And so, now, all of a sudden, we just voted on a bond election, and everybody voted for it. But now, in the future, Greenville is going to have streets that are not going to have storm sewer, they're going to have a bar ditch, and they're going to be 26-foot wide. So, I've talked to the city about, why can't we have 27-foot wide and be like Plano and Allen? Oh, no, we can't have that. Well, we've got to have 31-foot wide. So, my question is, you know, what, what just happened here? I, I mean, I know Todd, he's my engineer, did Stonewood, Ellis Farm, Cambridge, so, you know, him and I have had a lot of conversations over the years. So, I'm walking in here and going, hey, did the street width just change? Because if it did, that's great. Man, you just saved me a lot of money. Because I'm going to be talking to the city about doing 27-foot wide, if you're going to let Todd do 26. And I understand, man, we need these big houses out in the country. Sounds good to me. I'm all for it. But, at some point, something can go wrong, as Al said. The HOA, HOAs can be a little tricky. They can go down the tubes. And if they go down the tubes, guess who's going to be on the hook again? The taxpayers of Greenville are going to be on the hook. So, just when we get a chance to take the taxpayers off the hook by cleaning some of this stuff up and not continuing to have all these problems, now, already in the future, you're already creating something that could turn in to be a problem. At least, at least make them make the streets a little wider. I mean, when the fire truck comes down and all this kind of stuff, at least make the street be wider, put that on them at least, to make it tricky, you know, and make them, make them do some things up to the specs of the city of Greenville. Again, 31-foot wide, bar ditch, I mean, I put in storm sewer systems, and they're expensive. It's, you know, let's go spend a million bucks, let's go spend a million five, you know, boy, I wish I could have put bar ditches in. That's pretty cheap, bar ditches. Okay. Think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Mayor Renz.
Steve, did you, did you have a comment, additional comment?
26-foot glass, but it has two-foot shoulders on each side.
Wait till you get to my-
The street is actually 30-foot.
Nobody can hear you.
Start over.
Okay, the street is 26-foot, but it has two, it has two-foot shoulders on each side, so the street is actually 30-foot. And I want to, I want to remind you, this is an HOA. This is not a city street. It's not going to be a city street by the agreement, it's not going to be. I guess it would take something legal to get there, but we're, we're worried about something that hadn't even happened yet. Is the city going to get this or that? We don't know. But it is 30-foot, it's not a 26-foot. I, I'm very familiar with the state streets. I mean, drive not too far out of here and go to some of these and look, and that's exactly what you'll see. You know, nobody's opposed to rebuilding that inside the city close. This is right on the city limits, actually part of it's out that we'll take in. Whole different concept than what you build in these normal subdivisions around here. We're not talking about a 5,000-square-foot lot, we're talking about acreage here, so, whole different.
Can you address, just for a moment, the fact that if this is annexed and the HOA fails, could you talk about that? Can you add some color to that?
Honestly, no, I don't know. You know, I've never seen an HOA fail, I don't know. What a lot of people don't know, most of our subdivisions around here are HOA. They do have an HOA now.
In the city?
Yes, they cover different things, not the streets. It's one of the reasons we went planned development, because honestly, we didn't want the streets, not way out there. The service and all we'd had to do on those is, we didn't want them. That's why, instead of going single-family 1, I suggested going planned development, so they can achieve what they were trying to do.
What about the other services like public safety? Can you comment on that?
Well, I think, and, and as Todd said, the lots are going to sit back much farther than they do in regular zoning. And, and I'm not sure, I haven't seen their covenants yet, but probably they're going to have side entry garages or rear entry garages. So, you're going to have long driveways. There's not going to be any reason for people to be parking in the street. And as an HOA, they can put up no parking signs if they choose to do so. I don't see that as a safety reason. I mean, fire trucks are going to be able to get down it. I, I just don't see that as an issue.
Is no parking on the street something we can require as a city?
Not, not in the planned development, if on a private street. Now, if we, yeah, if the city takes it, yes, we could do it, we could do it by ordinance, but no, we can't, we can't require that. I'm assuming that we could, as we work a little deeper in the development agreement, could ask them to do that, but we still wouldn't be able to. The police department wouldn't be able to enforce it, it'd be something the HOA has to enforce.
Steve, has there been any discussion with fire or anything about the response times out there, out to there, or the ISO ratings out there?
Yeah, I can't tell you what that is, but there has. And one thing I want y'all to know, this is not a project that happened last month. I've been, I've been involved in this project for two years. And it's, and it's something I'd like this council to understand, and P&amp;Z, I don't think they do yet. I don't bring you something out of the clear blue that just happened yesterday. This thing has been set down with the engineers at the table in Altera over and over and over. We've been working at this for years to get to this point, we got here before I'd even bring it to you. So, you know, it's kind of discouraging to me, is trying to bring things to Greenville, because that's my job. I'm trying to build Greenville, Texas. I'm trying to get everything I can. Greg Simpson and I got a lot in common, except I go after the residential, he goes after the other, and I try to get all I can get in this town. That's what I was asked to do when I got this job. And when I bring you these things, they're deals. We've already got them worked out. I hear so many times, we worry about water, sewer, and all that. Guys, we've got that worked out before we get here. That's what y'all got us hired for. You know, we get questions, especially in P&amp;Z, we get questions over and over about water, sewer, all these issues. We've already done all that and worked that out. What I bring to them is a zoning change request. All these other animals, we've got, we've got done. And it's taken a lot of time. Daniel and I have spent a lot of time, months, trying to get this thing to the point we've got it now. So, it's not something that's just thrown together haphazard and done, and it's, it's very frustrating to me, the time that I've got into it, that we worry about similar things we worry about in these deals. You know? There I said it.
Thank you. Is there a applicant?
I just wanted to add to your question. In one of our many meetings, the staff did ask if we would put no parking signs, and we did agree to do that. And we will do it. I don't think we wrote it in there, but we will have no parking signs.
Okay. And I mean, the way, the way I look at it is, there's, if the city were to have to take over these streets, you look at 1,000 feet of a street, you have about a million dollars' worth of property that has tax money going to the street to be-
Plus HOA.
So, I don't see, I mean, that puts the city in a better spot than some other neighborhoods.
And the thing I want to say about the street, it is built to city standards, with the exception, it doesn't have the curb and gutter. But that's, it's a different kind of street. I mean, there's all different kinds of street. But it, as far as thickness, how it's built, the subsurface, everything, we're actually, we'll actually be inspected ourselves to make sure it meets that standard, but it's not going to be our street. So, they're already willing to build up to our standard. In some of these other places you go, where they do the same thing, I guarantee you, those streets aren't built to standard, if you even get concrete, so.
These are concrete streets.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Ellis, do you have a further comment, quickly?
One thing I want to point out, and that is, speaking about testing, we hire testing people to come and test every foot. We pay for that. So, it's not like we just go put some concrete down. It's tested, not only by the city, but it's tested by a third-party testing company that comes to do it. That's not the main thing I want to say. I just want to say this, this is great. This is a wonderful precedent. When I go get my car to drive home, I'll be out tomorrow looking at land to buy, and I'm going to put me some 26-foot wide with 30-foot, you know, with bar ditches on the side. I'll be back to see you folks. I'll be back to see you soon. I was in Frank Owens's office this morning, talking to him about this, and so, I didn't know that Todd had this, I didn't know this was worked out like this. So, this is great, I like these big houses, I'm fixing to build you a bunch of them up in Ellis Estates. I've got 500 and something lots, but this is great. I'll be back to see it. We're going out to the ETJ, we'll be back to talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Are there any other comment, any other? Yes?
I'm so confused.
Did you have a comment? Okay.
Fall Park 207 Patterson Drive, Greenville, Texas. I don't have a city council representative, that empty chair, so I'm going to adopt all of you tonight, not you.
That's understandable.
First, to Mr. Methman, I'd like to say, there is at least one member of planning and zoning that knows that the homework's been done before a package is given to them. Can't speak for the rest of them, but I can speak for this one. And I also understand that a lot of the things that come up are covered during the inspection and permit process of the building and construction. So, I get all of that in the engineering world. I don't have a particular problem with this project. My question is, the representative said last night that their agreement had been entered into with the city to annex this property as soon as the zoning change is approved. So, my question is, how can you grant all of these variances on a piece of property you know you're taking into the city? And, what are you going to tell Mr. Ellis when he does exactly what he said back there? It's on the agenda, anybody feel free to respond.
They can't respond.
It's on the agenda.
I know, I understand that, but they can't respond with political questions. We can only talk about issues of fact.
I'm sorry, I understand that, you're all right. But I urge you to look to the future. You're going to set a precedent right here tonight, that you're not going to get out of, or it's going to be see you in court, and Daniel's going to get a lot of business. Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If not, I have a question, and I'd like to go into executive session. I have a question, and I'd like for the council to go into executive session and discuss for a matter, please. We'll take a break, if we can. Yes, we'll go back to the Hill, we'll, we'll be back.